So.
All right, thanks for coming everybody. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Dan, anything to add or change? No? Dwayne?
Nothing to add.
Ryan?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, we've got a couple of things here. We're going to add A2 under the consent agenda. Resolution certifying delinquent claims to the county auditor. Under K2, that would be personnel, recommendation for full-time police officer David Coons. And then under J2, under the engineer's report, right-of-way entry forms, and you have copies of all those for the 16th Street area. With that, on our team, a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, any questions for administration or staff on a consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Don't have any cards for visitors. Mayor's report, we have two things there. I'll do the second one first. The January 11th meeting. We're not going to change the date. That is the normal date of our meeting, but we're going to start the meeting at 5:00. We're having that special presentation, and we're going to make that part of the meeting. So that way, if the presentation gets done at 5:20, we don't have to wait till 6:00 to start the meeting. So we'll officially start the meeting at 5:00 and then go into the business app for the presentation. Okay, so then we'll post that on social media and then post it here at City Hall, too. And then, time to thank somebody who's served the city of Casson for near or over 20 years. This is the second stint. So I'd like to present Dwayne Burton with a plaque of appreciation from the city of Casson in recognition of your dedicated efforts, leadership, and valuable service to the city of Casson. So, let's do this again.
Yeah. I was just going to take the last one for the.
We should have changed the date.
Changed it.
And I always said I was going to be.
Where's your plaque?
All right, smile. Everybody's happy, no one on a sad day here.
We photoshopped.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Yeah, thank you. It's been my pleasure to, as I stated earlier, to serve with many council and council members. And it's been an honor to serve the citizens of Casson. There's been a lot of good, positive things I've had the pleasure of being part of. So, I thank the citizens for their trust and allowing me to do this and enjoying this day.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Congratulations.
One of the most interesting things when you said before the meeting was you were the mayor when we got our first stoplight in the county, or the state, or the city, which is the first one in Dodge County, and now you're part of, actually, when it's coming out.
When it's coming out, yeah.
Went full circle.
Just going to outlast it by a little bit.
Just a time.
A little bit.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Yep.
All right, public forum, I don't have any cards. On to G, old business number one, the INI report. We have a guest here with us tonight, Tim Miller.
First off, we're going to be having our, Brandon's going to be presenting that INI report, and then we'll be looking at how to pay for the INI report.
Got it. Yeah, so there's a handout here, and there's a PowerPoint, so Tim's going to pull open here. So that is also in your council package. You've got kind of three options, if you will. What are we here to talk about tonight? Back after the flooding in 2019, we had some discussions with some of our citizens and ultimately brought those to the council and said, well, how are we going to help our sanitary sewer issues? Because ultimately, I'm going to go back a slide. Do we have one more slide?
See here if I can.
We ultimately had some issues in 2019 and then found out that it happens maybe a little more frequently than what we'd like. Specifically in 2019, we had a first sheet there, you can see the sanitary sewer manhole that ultimately was inundated with with flow the other way, Tim.
Backwards. There you go.
So that sewer manhole you see there on the left is actually Long Maston Creek, and the creek itself went in the top of that manhole. Knocked Casson up. We don't know where it is. It's probably in the Mississippi somewhere. So that ultimately helped flood our sanitary sewer system. We met with some property owners, the mayor and I met with the people on First Avenue. Sounds like that happened, ultimately their basements have flooded four times the last 15 years, and that's obviously not a good situation to have people rebuilding their basements. Some citizens were even to the point that they did not allow their children to sleep in the basement anymore. So, the direction in 2019 was engineers to start figuring it out and let's continue this conversation. And that's what we've spent the last couple of years doing, so my intent here tonight is kind of wrapping things up, if you will, on what we've been doing, and that maybe leads to the next slide. What have we done today? Really, we put together a bypass pumping plan, because no matter how big we build sewers and how much we hope we can seal it up so no raining groundwater get in, we still got to have the contingency plan of pumping our sanitary sewer out so it goes into the creek and not into our basement. So we worked with Dave, and he's here tonight to come up with a little better plan, some little protocols. They've been practicing that. The council purchased some larger pumps to help pump that sewer down, so that, in our opinion, has kind of been completed. And I will say, since I mentioned Dave was here, we did meet with staff and kind of go over the report that's also in your council packet. We wanted to present this in more of a presentation to the council as we kind of wrap these things up and talk about the next steps of potential capital improvements beyond what we've kind of done on the engineering and the staff side of things. So, that's been completed, so I think we're in better shape than we were before how to respond when ultimately we think that the sewer's going to be backing up into homes. Public education, we kind of wrapped that into the sump pump and lateral inspection program, because ultimately we spent a lot of money. And ultimately, requiring property owners to spend a lot of money on their homes or their private side, so we put together public education to educate our public, to really explain to them the problem. The sump pump and lateral inspection program, if you own property in town, you've experienced that, because ultimately we inspected every property in town. So of the 2,300 completed inspections, there's 31 outstanding inspections and property repairs that are still outstanding. And I think there's two more off that list. I think the list just came out today. So we're really whittling that down and likely going to be wrapping up that program here in a little bit. Smoke testing has been completed. We did that in the downtown area in the high school. We found two spots at the high school that's been repaired. Looking for, you can see the picture on the right there, ways that, like a storm sewer, get into the sanitary sewers. We had a couple of cleanouts at the high school that have been repaired. So, CCTV are sanitary sewers. That's the lower right corner there. You see are those clay sanitary sewer in town that are pretty dated, and those ultimately leak, allowing that rain and groundwater to get in. So we did the inspection, so that's been completed, so that's the evaluation portion of the project. Now we're going to talk about some of the capital improvements to ultimately fix the stuff that we found. Same thing with manhole inspections. We opened up every single manhole in the city of Casson, evaluated them for structural defects, and then also what sort of rain and groundwater is getting into them, looked at them, are they in a low point, are they in the floodplain? Are they likely inundated in the large rain events? How do we prioritize fixing those manholes up? So that's been completed. And then we looked at the Maston Creek trunk line. That has been completed, and I'll maybe not get into that too much, because I have a separate slide for that. So. Sources of INI and public education. This may look familiar. This is part of our public education, part of the sump pump program. So if you got into kind of the bowels, or if you remember when we talked about the sump pump program website that we put together, this is some of the public information that we had to explain INI to our citizens. And that is ultimately something that's going to be ongoing, too, putting that out to social media, part of your sewer and water bills received, the monthly newsletters, et cetera, are going to be included on there. The next slide there includes consequences of excess INI. The two slides on the right should look pretty familiar there. That's Highway 57. That was closed down in 2019, and we have sanitary sewers that are buried underneath there with open pick holes that are ultimately leaking water into our sanitary sewer and in turn inundates the system, and then our real sanitary sewer that's coming to those pipes ultimately backs up. The upper right-hand side there, there's some of the news clippings. Those are taken from some of the news clippings, so it's in our bonding bill request that we'll talk about later tonight. You guys that were on the council in 2019 will remember some of the outcry from the citizens, so that ultimately led to a lot of the work that we're doing here. Next slide there. You can see, I'll jump into some of the other things here with the sump pump and lateral inspection program. Again, it's over 99% complete, so the last letters were sent to November to remind the property owners that they're ultimately paying $100 surcharge. Our goal is not to surcharge people, it's to fix the private side of things so we can seal our system up so our neighbors are not experiencing our sanitary sewer in the basement. So, we're wrapping those up. There's not a whole lot to be left completed there, so we're going to keep pushing that and at some point shut down our website, and it'll just be a kind of standby whenever property owners want to have their inspections. So we're still pushing that, but we are wrapping that up here in a short order. Next slide, you'll see we have CCTV of pipe inspections. Again, we can't ask the private citizens to fix their stuff if our stuff isn't fixed up, so we evaluate every single sanitary sewer in the city. We ultimately assess them, and then we're going to have some pipe recommendations that we're going to talk about here shortly. How do we do that? You know, perfect scenario, we just rebuild our whole city every few years, right? And that's unrealistic. So, how do we have rehab pipes? Now you can see in the picture there, that is CIP lining, where they basically put a sock in and put some epoxy in and kind of make a pipe within a pipe, so that's a repair method we're going to be looking at. And then some pipes are in too bad a shape, or in the southwest portion of the town, where we said we have water main problems, we have storm sewer problems, we have sanitary sewer problems. We're probably in a full reconstruct, so we put together some maps and capital improvement planning to ultimately attack certain areas differently than we would in the rehab, so.
Can I just ask one quick?
Absolutely.
On that rating system, is zero good or zero bad? Does it go high to?
Zero is good, so.
Okay.
So, good point, Mayor. So we look at things when it comes to the CCTV from structural ratings, meaning like specifically a collapse, that clay sewer I showed earlier, like those like to collapse, so that is a structural defect. And then operation and maintenance is when Dave and the maintenance staff is out there, if there's a lot of sediment and roots and whatnot in there that we're in there jetting that line and rooting those out. So, that kind of leans into also the INI rating, and then what do we do to ultimately rehab that pipe? Think CIC, CP, do a point repair, line that pipe, or ultimately replace it? So we're kind of weighing out not only just INI, there's a little bit more extra depth that goes into that.
But zero is good, five is bad.
Yep, correct.
Yep.
This next map may be a little tough to see here. This is our pipe inspection findings. In the map, we kind of cut it. We debated about how to show this, but trying to show the whole city on one slide is a little difficult. So, on the left is north everything, north of Main Street or Old Highway 14. In the lower right, there's everything to the south. That red there is ultimately the 100-year floodplain of Maston Creek. And if you remember, 2019 was one to two feet over that 100-year flood event, so now we're talking about a 500-year flood event. But we've experienced four 100-year flood events, or roughly four events in the last 15 years. So when we were looking at some pipe inspections, we thought it would be good to overlay that floodplain, because if there's water over it in large rain events, it's probably allowing more INI, and those are the type of events that we were tasked to ultimately help out. So when we look at that, a couple of things to note there, we have some gray areas there. Those are just areas that we did not include in the project, because it was Third, Fourth, and Fifth, and Highway 57. Those are projects that we didn't include in the CCTV, because we were rebuilding them. Where they have been rebuilt, or we were rebuilding them. If you want to jump back, Tim. The other items up there is the area in yellow there. I mentioned on the south part of the city there, the southwest portion, that's part of our bonding bill request and likely our next big street reconstruction project. So, what we're looking at today, tonight, was a rehab of that area, looking at some of the deficiencies within that pipe. Knowing that that area, we're not going to invest any of these INI dollars, because we're going to be rebuilding it in the short term. So we're outlining that area to ultimately not do any work. Same thing between Highway 57 and Third, Fourth, and Fifth, the north part of the map there. There's some point repairs and some lining recommendations, but knowing that that'll likely be a reconstruct in the coming year. So, we're balancing out a little bit of, we're going to reconstruct that area, so let's not invest in maintaining that area if we don't need to in the short term, because we're going to be in there rebuilding the entire area. So ultimately, the rest of the recommendations on there are going to be part of the cost that we're going to be talking about as we move forward here. So, after the pipe inspections.
Jump to the next slide.
Manhole inspections, same sort of thing. We ultimately got to somehow rate them up and see how they all kind of shake up, and then ultimately have recommendations on either replacing them, digging them up, replacing them, pretty straightforward, or rehabbing them. Maybe there's just a leaking joint on the manhole barrel section. We shoot some grout in there, and that can keep the water from coming into the manhole. Or casting replacement. You can see that picture in the lower center there. There's open pick holes. That's kind of the old style, where it's easy to pick up that manhole and open it up. Well, if we have a river over the top of that, or if it's on a low point, and we have a storm sewer flowing into there, that really inundates our small diameter sanitary sewer with all that water that gets in there. So really, we have a casting replacement only if the manhole is in good shape in some areas. And you can see some ratings over there. Again, is it the INI? Is it dry? Is it actively leaking? And then some structural defects there, the top two feet, which is the casting and the adjusting rings, and then the cone all the way down to the bottom, two feet, which is the bottom of the manhole, where the pipes come through that can be leaking, too, so we do rate those. With that, we kind of boil that all down, same map, but instead of pipes this time, we have manholes. And you can see we have some to replace, some to rehab, and then ultimately we have replaced castings, chimneys, which is the top part of the manhole where we see a lot of the inflow, where that, again, the creek is draining into the sanitary sewer. And again, we have those two areas, I call it southwest reconstruction, west of 57, south of Maston Creek, and north of Highway 14, and then west of 57 and east of the Third, Fourth, and Fifth project up to the park and the pool area there, down to Main Street. Thinking that, ultimately, that's going to be a future reconstruction, so the work that you see on this map is not going to be included in some of the estimates we're looking at. But then again, of course, we ought to be looking at a realistic timeline for that reconstruction, because Dave said to me, what's the timeline between that we actually get this stuff done, and should we be doing some of that manhole rehab work? Because we don't have, we're not going to get to it quick enough. You know, same thing, we talked about our last paving project. You know, are we going to, are we going to get to it faster? Are we going to need the utility work before we pave it? Or is that pavement going to be shot? So we're always working on lifecycle cost analysis and budgets and how we actually complete the work to get the best bang for our buck, so. That is ultimately the recommendations for the manholes. Maston Creek trunk line, and then you see a picture in the lower left there, that is the floodplain, or the flooding that we experienced in 2019, which is again that red overlay that you saw earlier. The map to the right there shows our drainage areas. I think it's kind of tough to see, but the pink is our existing drainage area, kind of the north part of town that drains to our northwest lip station, all along the dump road, and then along 16th Street to essentially the bridge on 16th Street. And that area in blue is the kind of southeast portion of the town, kind of the old downtown, Highway 14 corridor and everything to the south. That line in red there is the Maston Creek trunk line. Everything kind of comes together at the railroad bridge at Maston Creek, and then follows the creek down along that red line to the treatment plant at 16th Street. So that ultimately, we're looking at that and saying, well, it's backed up at that point, and it's been kind of a bottleneck in the system. Is it undersized? So we looked at it from two perspectives. Generally, we'll say, do not increase trunk lines, do not increase your waste for our treatment plant, fight the INI, lower that INI. So that's one way to look at it, and then we want to look at future growth. You can see in the green area there, that's a future growth area that's shown on the comp plan that is also easily served by that trunk line, meaning all that area in green, if we grow, south of 14, the properties to the north and east, or kind of east of the school campus, that is all going to be served by that trunk line. So it's kind of the, you know, when's the right time to do it is always the question. Well, if it rains, it's been undersized, and it's not going to get any better, because we're going to continue to grow in there. So if it doesn't rain, it's fine. It's been fine since 2019. If we have another big flood, it's not going to be fine. And we probably are not going to be able to get enough INI out to ultimately offset development. So ultimately, we're looking at having to replace it at some time. When is that? Again, I don't know, because how fast are we going to grow, and is it going to rain again? But ultimately, we look at it, if we are going to say that that area is going to be served by the area in green, and it will be. Now, again, timing, who knows? We ultimately are going to have to upgrade that trunk line, so that's why we have a recommended size in there. So that is ultimately a decision or discussion that needs to be on the council's docket here moving forward, because it is very critical. And again, if we have another flood of 2019, we're going to have some things to lower the frequency of that flood, but never say never. When it comes to flooding, you just can't do it. And ultimately, increasing this trunk line and doing some of the INI will help, and having the bypass pumping plan in place will help. So we're just ultimately trying to reduce the frequency of that. So, ultimately, that is recommended to be replaced. Next slide there. Handouts, I'll skip over that. I'll briefly go, because it's not actually in the present page, presentation. So cost estimate at 4.6 million included, those two areas that we kind of boxed out earlier that I showed you. So, what's up on the screen, or the second cost estimate is without the future reconstruction, because those reconstructions will be different kind of line items, if you will, in our capital improvement plan. So, you can see there's a lot going on in that slide. What you can see, we have, again, methods of sanitary sewer system improvements that ultimately help seal up our sanitary sewer. The first kind of box of items, you can see we prioritize them high to medium. And then we have that Maston Creek trunk line improvement that kind of broke apart, knowing that's kind of a separate project, if you will. So what does it all mean? And you can see we've got about 1.1 million of INI sanitary sewer improvements. You can see the highest priority is the point repairs. Thinking about a point repair is something that may fail in the short term, so we want to get those dug up and replaced. Manhole casting replacement, we've broken that up into structural defense or defects or in the floodplain. Again, if we have open pick holes in the floodplain, if it's in Maston Creek, we want to make sure that those manholes are sealed up, so we want to prioritize them, so we get more bang for our buck to get the INI out. And then we have some pipe lining, which is a pretty sizable item. Those are the old clay lines to get those sealed up and less likely to leak. And then we have some manhole rehabs, and then again, some manhole casting replacements, but think about those as a well-drained area where there's actually not a lot of water getting on top of that sanitary sewer manhole to leak. So, we'll hopefully kind of prioritize them. We're going to see here, the next slide, is how do we attack that $4.1 million project, or it's going to call it, I guess, 4.2. Really, we have kind of two phases there of our, we call it 23 sanitary sewer improvements, and then a 27 sanitary sewer improvements to line up for a potential timeline. And Tim's going to talk about how that kind of works into sanitary sewer rates. So we've basically broke that 1.2 million into two $600,000 projects. And then we have the Maston Creek trunk line upsized in 2025 again. When we do that project, you know, I don't have a good answer, because it's all about if it rains and if we grow. You know, I don't, I don't know how to better explain other than that. I mean, it's just, it's one of those things. It'd be awesome to have it in there, but if it doesn't rain for the next 50 years, you know, we're upsizing it for something that's not going to happen. But how do we predict the future, so? And then again, the southwest reconstruction and the first and second avenue reconstruction, west of 57 up to the North Park Pool Area. That's a counter to another capital improvement plan, so that's not really part of this study. We just wanted to pull those costs out, so we weren't kind of double dipping, if you were, or be able to plan the projects kind of separately, so. That's the cost estimates we had. I'll pause there and see if you have any questions. I know it's a lot of information. I wanted to keep it a high level and not get into the, the report is in your council packet. We're not planning on going into that tonight, because staff and us reviewed that, so.
Thanks, Brandon. Any questions for Brandon before I ask a question? I, just, just going back to 2019, you know, we were given very clear instruction by the taxpayers that this was a priority. And, again, at the time, when they had water all over the place, cost wasn't an issue, right? It was get it fixed, get it done, what if this happens again? So, just as we remember that going forward to those of us that'll be here, this was very clear that whatever we needed to do needed to be done, which goes into the next thing with the bonding and everything else. And then my question is, we haven't submitted, do we have to resubmit our bonding request?
I understand it was resubmitted Monday.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, can we add the 3 million to it? Because it's part of the floodplain.
Well, it kind of goes into, you know, if we're looking at a big picture, that included some of that southwest reconstruction, so that may kind of pull those costs into the bonding bill.
Okay. I didn't know if it was too late to.
If you will, that may change.
Yeah, I think the bill, the bill was upsized from last year. We added inflation onto the bill that was submitted last year.
Already added to it.
But, I mean, part of it is, you know, each of these cities is making requests, and we want to be, I mean, we're looking at a $10 million project for that southwest and for the flood retention. I would say no, probably not at this point.
Yep.
We could go for a, you know, in the future, we certainly could go to another bonding session if that was something that occurred.
To your point, Mayor, if we do get that flood control project built, that will help ultimately protect that Maston Creek flood, that Maston Creek trunk line from flooding again to that level.
Sure.
Because we're going to be holding back that much water.
Well, I mean, I guess that would be the solution, would be instead of just upsizing the pipe that's going to, you know, hopefully fix the, you know, downstream. It's going to be sending it downstream, though. We're hoping to actually hold that up upstream, so that it's, instead of flooding anybody, it's flooding a field instead of sending it to, you know, Byron, or I guess they could probably take it over there.
As part of the bonding bill request, if we built that structure, flood control structure, we're looking at a two-foot reduction in the 100 rain event. So we saw that picture, Highway 57 there at Plaza 57. Imagine that water level being two feet down. Our sanitary sewer manholes that are now flooded, maybe out of the floodplain, so we're going to have less impactful, knock on wood, we'll have less impactful sanitary sewer flooding on that trunk line, so. I think that'll help tremendously, so that might be the chicken or the egg, right? Like which one comes first?
I mean, if we have success with this proposal this year, that certainly will embolden me to continue to talk to legislators about doing something in two years. I mean, the more often you do it, they get used to it, and you're in North.
Sure.
You can create the narrative of, hey, city's spending X amount of money, we need help with these other solutions. So I don't, that's a really good point.
Okay.
And the other thing, too, that's to continue on the point, there is, I think, more of a regional statewide benefit with the flood control structure, with the sanitary sewer, you know, maybe just a city benefit. Obviously, us not bypassing into the Maston Creek is an advantage statewide, don't get me wrong, but that was kind of our other little angle of the Maston Creek. We're helping Highway 14. We're helping Manorville who flooded at the same time, Oxford Park, all our water that we're holding back ultimately drains those communities also, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Then. Your rate study. Tim, you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, awesome. So it's your turn.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully, you can see that now.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll get rolling, and I think the full report is in your packet. Apologize for not being able to be there in person. I very much appreciate being able to connect this way. I think you were on the council last year when I presented the electric and water rate study, so I was able to see you then. So I'll just go ahead and go through the highlights here, and then, you know, please stop me if you have any questions. And can't see the slides at any time, please let me know as well. So what we're proposing then is 2% overall increases the next five years. I think when we, when I entered into the study, I was maybe expecting that you would need greater increases, given the projects that you've got going on. But I think you're actually in pretty good shape, and we'll see those numbers here in a minute, that I think with the cash reserves that you have and the cash flows that you're having, I think you'll be okay with the 2%. And we can always go back and adjust that down the road if we need to. One thing you'll notice, and we talked about this with the rate studies in last year, is that not every customer will see the exact same percentage increase. So, one of the important components of the rate study is to kind of evaluate the cost of providing service so that you know, you know, what residents should pay, what commercial customers should be paying. So that's a part of this, and you will see that we're proposing different percentage increases for different customer classes. So we'll look at that here in a minute. One piece of this, too, is that we are proposing different customer charges for residential and multi-house units as compared with commercial. And so this would be similar to what you saw in the water rate study as well, where they have different customer charges in place. Reasons for the rate increases, obviously with the capital expenditures that you just heard about, that's a major reason. And also just the inflation factor that's going on right now with all expenses going up. You know, we did assume 5% inflation, which is more than we normally assume in studies, but just with the way the economy's going right now, we felt it would be better to be safe and conservative, so we tried to bump up those costs as much as possible. But obviously, with expenses going up 5%, and, you know, building units only going up about half percent, you know, pretty simple to do the math, that revenues are not growing as quickly as expenses. And so that kind of causes the need for having these normal rate increases. Moving on to the next slide then, building units by class. Three-quarters of the units are really residential. About 12% is multi-housing, and then the rest is commercial. And so this is again based directly off of the water sales, and so those become the metered units for sewer as well. So that's kind of driven by water usage that occurs in the city. Historically, then, you could see a couple of big years when it was raining. It's kind of ironic with some of the flooding in 2019, but there's also some metering changes that occurred in 2019, so that's some of that growth that you saw there in that year in terms of the building units. Last year was a very dry year, so you saw 4% increase in building units. We're kind of assuming that, based on year-to-date data, that it would go back about 4%, back to more normal level sales. And then we have assumed 1% growth the next couple of years. That's primarily driven by the new apartment building that's under construction. So we have included that and that in there, and then after that, kind of a nominal half percent growth. So as you add, you know, roughly about 25 new homes and a few new businesses each year, that would drive that growth in the building units. The other piece I have there up to the right is the variable costs, and so that's the power and the chemical cost of treating the sewage. And you can see that's going up from about $1.30 per thousand to about $70. So when you compare that to the volume rate that customers pay here and then, you can see that there's a big spread between relatively low variable costs and the actual billed sewer rate, the full, all the fixed costs that go into the full rates. These are just the building units by year. Just on the highlight 2021, you can see there in the purple how much higher than normal the sales were in June of last year, also in August. And so that is something we wanted to adjust more, because we know that that type of year could occur again, but it's not going to occur every year. So you can see in the green line there, we really adjusted sales back down, again, more of a normal level based on year-to-date sales. And that's kind of the curve that we're facing, our forecast I'm going forward with again. So modest growth. So modest growth with new customers. As far as the cost breakdown then, you can see about half of your costs are capital expenditures and debt service. That's very typical of a water or sewer utility. So a lot of fixed costs, again, you talked about the capital projects going on. So those are all kind of rolling into this breakdown going forward. About 22% is other operating, 20% is salaries and benefits. And then we just mentioned the variable costs, that's only about 8%. And actually, some of those power costs are actually lighting at the treatment plant, so it's probably even a little bit under that. But you can see a very small piece of the total really varies with the volume that's treated. And the rest of it is really relatively fixed, the salaries and all the other costs that you're going to have no matter what level the sales are at. And you can see at the bottom there that for every 1% change in units, you're looking at about a $7,500 change in margins and income. So a pretty big swing again, if you look at, say, a 4% or 5% change in one year, that's going to really have a big impact on the bottom line. As far as capital expenditures, I think these match up pretty well. I wasn't able to see Brandon's slides. I know that the Madison Creek trunk line, we've talked about 25 or 27. Either way, it's in there at 3 million and certainly some of that you might need some bonding for. We just dropped in 2 million as a placeholder, recognizing that when the time comes to do that project, you'll have to kind of decide how much you're going to get from bonding and how much you can pay for from reserves. But we think the rest of the project, based on the cash flows and the projections that we've outlined, so the Southwest reconstruction and all the I and I projects should be able to be covered with cash reserves or revenues in that year. So that's really what we're trying to set you up with is to not add a ton of additional debt. I know you've got several issuers that's outstanding already. And so kind of balancing that aspect between financing from reserves and from debt. We also haven't assumed any bonding or grants in there as well, so if you get any of those funds, that would be kind of a bonus here. The other thing that staff made us aware of is a possible treatment plant rate out there in 2029. Obviously, that's beyond the study period, so if that occurs, that's something that will have to be evaluated as that gets closer. But we are kind of mindful of that, wanting to ramp up the rates to kind of prepare for that as well. Looking at the cost changes then from 22 to 27, you can see that all of the various categories are really going up, salaries, benefits, supplies, other services. You can see a total of about $330,000 of increased costs that we're projecting between this year and 27. So again, that's really driving the need for the increases that we're proposing. The revenues would go up about $365,000. And so we're just really again trying to balance out so those cash flows remain fairly consistent. You can see right now in 2022, you have about $790,000 left over who are either capital expenditures or going to reserves. And now it goes to about $825,000. And so as you know, in a given year, you might have, you know, less than 50,000 capital projects, maybe just a piece of equipment that you're purchasing. And then again, next year, if you do a I and I project, that could be half a million to a million. And so really that's what this cash flow is meant to cover. If you've got a heavy capital project here, then you can use these funds. If you don't, you can kind of put it into reserves and use it the next year. So that's really what we're trying to do with the rates, make sure that you're prepared for whatever might come down the road. Looking at income, the red bars are the current rates and you can see going forward, if you don't change rates, income is projected to drop off from about $400,000 down to about $200,000. So again, something you want to avoid, and that's what the regular increases are meant to do, is to really stabilize income. So you can see in the blue bars there, with the proposed rates, income has remained just about $400 to $450,000, so very consistent with past income. In this chart, I have taken out the capital contributions that have occurred in a couple of these years, because again, those are kind of special situations with some funding that has occurred. So this is really more of your ongoing income that we're showing here in the chart. Then looking at cash reserves, and I took this all the way back to 2010. You can see that actually back in those years, you actually had deficit. And so one, I think a water utility had borrowed some funds to, to kind, to sewers to kind of even things out. But you've seen a great recovery in cash since then, all the way up to about $3 million now. So that is a big benefit of the regular small increases that you've been doing for many years, that you've kind of righted the ship and certainly sewers get back on their feet now and has some reserves in place. The red line is with current rates, so you can see it will drop off to about 1.7 million with no rate adjustments. With the rate adjustments, you're looking at about 2.3 to 2.4 million by the end of the study, the study period. So again, what we're trying to do is leave a nice amount of cash going forward for that treatment plant or if Madison Creek comes in higher than projected or any of these other contingencies. Really that's the goal, I think, of the reserves is to have that flexibility so you know that if, if contingencies come up, that you're prepared for that. And you can see how it bounced around the last couple of years, just with the different capital projects. So one year you might have a lot of capital projects, so it, it goes down a bit and the next year it goes up. So you're going to see that continually going forward. We did this last year too for the electric and water, so we benchmarked it on the utilities and look at what percentage of other revenues they have in cash. And so for sewer utilities, the median is just under 100, so 95%. So if you look at, say, a million dollars of revenue, then they're having close to a million dollars in reserves. Historically, maybe even below that, but you can see you're now above the median. But even with proposed rates, you're still going to remain just right at that median level in 2027. So again, I think well-positioned not only for your local needs, but also when you compare to other utilities and what they keep in reserves, you're really in a good spot there as well. Before we go to get rates, just want to look at these rate comparisons. Again, we chose many of the same cities that we chose last year for the water comparison. So this first chart is residential at a kind of a typical level of 3,500 gallons. The red bar is Cassin's current rates and the blue is proposed. So under proposed rates, next year, a typical residential customer would see a dollar increase in their bill, so a pretty modest, small increase. The median bill of these other 10 utilities is 23% lower, so that's that orange bar there. So you kind of stay in about the same spot with just a couple of utilities higher than Cassin. The next chart for a higher volume residential customer using 10,000 gallons, you're a little bit lower here on the chart, just under $100 per month, they would go up about $4 to $104. And in this case, the median is actually only, only 11% lower than Cassin's. So a little bit closer to the median on this chart than the first one. Moving to commercial then at 15,000 gallons, this would be similar to, say, a small restaurant or clinic or many of the other smaller businesses in town using that quantity of water. You can see again, the median is only 4% lower than Cassin's, so even more competitive for this level of usage. And this customer would go up about 6% or about $9 per month. And then finally, for a higher volume customer, so looking at the schools and some of those types of customers, QuickTrip, gas stations, things like that, you see you're actually the lowest on the chart right now at 426. The median is actually 12% higher. And so in this case, this customer would go up about $30 per month, but would still be below the median. So what we tried to show with these comparisons, again, flipping back to the first chart is kind of the relative positions on each of these. And it does kind of indicate that you are much more competitive with your rates for the commercial customers than the residential. So it was something that we took into consideration and I think there's a reason for that, which we'll kind of cover next with the proposed rates. So then getting into the rates, there's two components to sewer rates, the customer charge and the volume rate. And I kind of outlined there the cost that we kind of allocated into that customer charge, which would be the administration billing expenses, all of the debt service, and then most of the capital expenditures. And we offset some of that with some of your revenues that you get in for connection fees. And so that's one component. And then the volume charge is really collecting all of your O and M costs for both the treatment plant and the collection system. So those are more, especially the treatment plant is generally regarded as more of a volume-related type of thing. So the more, obviously, water or sewer discharge that you put in the system, the more you should pay on the volume rate. And so really when doing this analysis, we came up with a volume rate of 932 is what we're targeting for 2027. But really, in essence, right now, what's happening with the rates is that the customer charge is just a little bit too high in relation to the volume rate. So in other words, you're just collecting a little bit too much in fixed charge compared with the volume rate. So we have to propose bigger percentage increases to the volume rate to kind of catch up to where that should be, to collect all of those variables and fixed O and M costs in the volume rate. And then looking at the fixed charge again, you've kind of seen that in the comparisons of the residential customers, really that 3464 is probably a little bit high compared to the volume rate in relation to what commercial customers are paying. So we're actually proposing to slightly decrease that residential rate over the next five years. I know this is a little bit unusual, it's not something we normally propose to actually reduce the charge, but we really need to do that to build that volume rate up to what it needed to be. And so what we're proposing then is by 2027, there would be about a $10 difference between residential and commercial as far as that customer charge. And if you remember, on the water rate side, what was approved is about a $10 differential as well. It happens to be on the water side that it's much lower at about $10 for residential and $20 for commercial. So just how the math works out for cost. But somehow this would be very similar to how the water rates are structured with slightly different residential and commercial customer charges. And then all the other costs would be collected in that volume charge of 932 by 2027. I also have a note here that multi-housing customers pay a customer charge for each unit, so again, that's the same as water. So each apartment unit, well, the apartment building owner would pay that 3464 for each unit. And that would continue, other than obviously that proposed rate would go down slightly to $30. Any questions on that again, in terms of the rationale for what we're proposing?
No.
So then these are the proposed percentage changes overall, again, 2% per year. Residential would just be just slightly underneath that because again, residential is about three quarters of your revenue, so we're going to always come in very close to what the overall percentage is. Multi-housing would get about a 1% increase per year and then commercial would be up at around 5.5% or 6%. But again, as we saw on the rate comparison charts, the commercial rates are already, you know, again, pretty competitive with what they're paying in other cities. And so that would continue even with these rate changes. You can see also the rate changes that have occurred historically. And again, I want to applaud the council for doing these regular small increases. Oftentimes, we come into a rate study and they have it done an increase for several years, and so it makes it a lot more difficult if we have to come in and propose a 5% or 10% or 15% increase. And so I really think you're, you're doing this the right way by having these regular small increases to kind of keep pace with costs. And that's really what we're proposing here in the study is to continue with those small increases. Just as far as residential, again, a typical customer is going to see about a dollar per month increase. With higher volume customers, it could be a few more dollars than that, but again, fairly modest amounts for any residential customers in each year. And so kind of to wrap it up again, a about a 10% overall increase over five years impacts delivery a little bit by customer, but again, typical residential is going to see about a buck per month in each year. So please, no increases. As always, if you have any changes, if some of these capital projects come in higher than you expected, we can certainly help with any changes that might be necessary. We do think this is going to better reflect the cost of providing service. Well, I'll still recover your fixed costs because obviously you've got some significant fixed costs with sewer utility, so that would continue. And again, I think your financial position is, is very strong and would remain that way going forward. So again, with that, appreciate staff, all their information and input they provided, and I'll be open for any other questions.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
Any questions for Tim? No, Tim, I think no questions on this end. Thanks for doing that for us again, we appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you very much.
All right, Tim, have a great night.
You too. Thanks.
Okay. Not related, I guess semi-related to this. So say we're successful with our bonding bill in the spring, we do our big flood control project, we do all these capital improvements or anything, would that push off the expansion of the sewer plant? Depending on growth, obviously, right? If we've given it a growth spurt, that would, but is it based on volume? Is that why we have to expand it?
It's more your sediment load, which comes from growth.
Okay.
So I think, I think that, I don't know, it's not even on our radar to upgrade the treatment plant. Dave's maybe can add more to that, but I think we continue to push that off. So running back to 2017, I think when we did the treatment plant, was it?
Seventeen, yeah.
We looked at it, it was going to be a lot larger project, we basically halved it. So let's do this currently for flow and then when the other loading comes in down the road, then we'll have to do the second phase, which is what we're talking about now. And I think we continue to push that off because it's been operating very well. In addition to that, it's been, it was a very dry fall, but they've had historic low flows at the treatment plant. And I think it's part of it is the sump pumps that we've gotten disconnected from the system and the work that we've done on the private side. But, so the, the flows have been really good lately. Again, knock on wood, it doesn't rain like 2019, we're going to be a different conversation, but I think we continue to push that off.
Well, I mean, I think definitely to, to our point, and one thing that I think was flip-flopped maybe in the presentation, was the, the trunk line upgrade and the second phase of I and I.
Sure, you had the 25, 20,000.
Actually, the, the, right now, we're planning to do all the I and I improvements first before the trunk line. You know, talking with Brandon about, I mean, the 18-inch truck line that we have currently is, it's fully operational. I mean, it's in good condition, you know? And so I'm hesitant to replace that without taking other steps first to try and mitigate. So for example, right, if the, if we can get the flood mitigation project through, which would be expensive in itself, but I think that has a ton of value, which would allow us to maybe not have to do some of those improvements as much. And it's also based on growth.
Right.
So if we see the growth in the Northeast, it's possible, you know, from kind of behind the, the schools in that area, that could be another, you know, 2,000 residents. If we see that, then we're looking at a new, you know, a new treatment plant option.
Sure, an update.
But if we see housing growth slow down, you know, so as more information becomes available, that'll be able to help you make good decisions as a council with what we want to prioritize, I think.
Okay. Perfect. No questions on the rate study? I mean, I think Tim does a good job.
Yeah. No, I really appreciate his, he's put a lot of time into it and, and staff does too. So Dave, anything you wanted to highlight at all or?
Nope, he's having a good one.
And I like how he's differentiating to the volume side.
Right.
Does that make sense to lower the fixed for residential?
Well, right, so I mean, so one message to take to some, you know, we do hear resident feedback, you know, one message to take to residents is, you know, based on these numbers, if this is the rates that the council decides to go forward with, the resident rate, the residential rates are going down.
Right.
You know, and, and part of, you know, well, but even total, because we're going to raise the volume rate, you know, 40 cents and we're going to lower the base rate by, you know? So if you use 1,000 gallons, your rate's going to go down aggregate, the more gallons you use, right, the volume's going to go up. But, I mean, so the, the idea is to shift some of those costs off of residential, which we are a very residential-heavy community. So that's kind of how they, they got into the residential, because that's where the bulk of the flows come from, but.
It'd also promote, promote water conservation too, so.
Sure. Okay. Now, that'll become part of our overall fee schedule, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Which is next on the agenda.
That's right. So earlier this fall, we had a fee schedule that was included in a packet. And so staff have been reviewing that and there are some, some tweaks, not a lot. Last year, we made a lot of changes to different things, so I don't know. Last year, we made a lot of changes to different things, so I don't know, Linda, do you want to run through, or do you want me to do that?
It doesn't matter, but the first page, there should not be a star here on the actual cost, where it says red, it should just be actual cost.
So yeah, so you've got a red line copy in your packet now, and there are a couple areas where we didn't receive the feedback from staff, department heads, for example, like the ice arena, I didn't get the feedback from Howie. So those, we may bring back to you at a, I mean, the council at a future date where, when he's gotten us the numbers for the ice arena, but by and large, we've gotten the feedback. I know there were a lot of tweaks that, like the fire department did last year, so they don't have as many things this year, so. And then some of them were just actuals, for example, like on that page, you've got engineering costs, certified building official, building inspection consultants, I mean, those are the numbers that we've been given by CMS for their new rates. So it's, sometimes we ask, well, where did this number come from? Well, it's coming from what we've been giving us the new rates for next year.
Okay. And the aquatic center ones, I see those are in.
And those were rates that were previously reviewed and approved by the park board and also the council, so.
All right. Do you need any action from us on this tonight?
So we would be seeking approval of the fee schedule, so that we could get those, especially the utility rates, approved, so that we can get those in the New Year's billing cycle. If possible.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on the changes? We've already seen most of these. And that would include the sewer rate study that we just looked at, so. I'll move to approve as presented. Thanks, Dwayne, do I have a second? Okay, thanks Ryan, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thanks for your work on that. Tim and Linda, appreciate it. Lot splitting, record, lot split recording Dodge County.
Sure. So council will recall, and I did include a little write-up on this in the, my report, we had an issue earlier this year about property in northeast Cassin, which was formerly the Blains subdivision, where the council had provided feedback, and we've been through some legal wrangling previously, where we wanted to make sure that parcel was kept intact. The county split that parcel, and obviously, we kind of protested that. However, you know, the county did the split, so now it's in two pieces, which causes some potential issues for us going forward if that other parcel were to be sold. I mean, the city attorneys had a discussion with some of her colleagues with the county, and kind of the understanding the county has purveyed to us is that they do have the ability to stop those lot splits if it's in city limits. They didn't do it this time, which obviously I wish they would have. They're asking us to take a look at this resolution, which I've included in there, and potentially approve that, which the state statute 272-162 provides for us to restrict those parcels, and you can, you can read through that. I don't need action on this tonight, if you'd like to wait, we can certainly wait, but basically, the county's told us if we pass this, then they're going to make sure that they check with us before they split any lots. I think that they already have that authority, but that's what they've asked us to do, so that's why it's included in your package tonight for approval.
So they're saying, without this, they don't have to ask us?
You know, that's my understanding from the email, and you could see the email that was included there from Mr. DeCoke.
Yeah.
So he's got his email there. So, you know, I can't speak for exactly, you know, their policies, but obviously, that's why I think it's important for us, if that's what they're going to require, that we take some action there.
Yeah, we can take action on it, but I still think they're reaching, they can't come to the city and split lots without our.
That would be my, that's certainly my stance.
Even knowing about it.
Right.
Even if they have the authority to do it, they should at least notify us, because there's sometimes very specific reasons why people are trying to run it end around on this to avoid asking the city. So I have no problem with the resolution, but then they just got to make sure they do it.
Well, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, we were actually able to catch one before they split it a little later in, you know, this year, and so they did stop. So, yeah, I mean, you know, sometimes things happen, but I want to make sure that the city has every authority it should have.
Anybody have any questions on that or comments? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, providing a lot split authority.
One second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Tim. Ministers' report.
Service assurance.
Uh, let's see here. So a couple of things, INI recommendations, you had that tonight, sewer rate study, lot split resolution, the fee schedule. We do have an upcoming meeting of Semblum coming up in January, and that information is included there. We're hosting, which is a real credit, that's a large organization, Southeastern Minnesota League of Municipalities, I don't know how many towns there are now, Dan, but.
Eighty-three out of 101, I think.
So it's certainly, part of the reason we're hosting is that Dan has been the president of that organization for several years, and he's actually going to be stepping down from that role in the next month, so he, as a last hurrah, kind of got to host the meeting. So hopefully, you're able to attend that, you know, that meeting if you're not. I'm planning on attending myself, because it's good to be represented, and does have some interesting topics, they do these a couple of times a year, so certainly invite you to come for that. We had a question about that Southwest bonding request. The city engineer and I met with Representative Quam and Senator Nelson regarding that request, had a good discussion with Senator Nelson. Senator Senjum had relayed some of, you know, he had gotten that bill written originally last year, the bonding bill didn't go through, and so Senator Senjum had relayed on all the projects that he had, so I appreciate him doing that. Senator Nelson had some new questions that she asked, and they had planned on, I haven't checked, I have to check and see if it was planning to be jacketed and actually submitted on the 19th, so she was planning on getting it actually submitted before the session started, which is great, because it'll be right away, it'll be in the first kind of set of bills that are provided, and hopefully, we'll have hearings. We're hoping to have the bonding committee, either from the House or the Senate, come here. Last year, I think the Senate bonding committee was here, we had a good visit with them, and, you know, I felt really good about our request last year. I think if they could have gotten the bonding bill passed, we had a very good, you know, opportunity. This year, the state legislature is awash in cash, and so everybody and their brother is getting on the bandwagon, putting in projects, so I'm glad we got ours in early and it was in last year's, you know, ticker. So hopefully, we have a good chance of that. We are looking at a total $10 million project, $5 million of that is what we're requesting for from the state, and $5 million would be through various, you know, different funds the city has, whether it's some bonding and some, you know, revenues from sewer or water or whatnot. So any questions on that, anybody has? I think most of you have seen that presentation already, including that packet before. The other one that I did put in there, once again, was the SafeSure program, just to head up, also that foundational advance program, I still have not gotten anyone officially requesting, I know Ryan, we talked about it, I know Paul, we had talked about it a little bit, that's coming up pretty soon to get those in, so if you are thinking about it or you're getting it on your calendar, please let me know. And then, like I said, I jumped down to the SafeSure, presented that kind of to council at our last meeting, I'm looking for feedback tonight if there's any feedback, if we'd like to pursue that, or if it's not something we're interested in pursuing.
I don't have any problem with it, so is this a mandatory thing everybody has to do, or they can opt out of it?
It would be an opt-out, so we would automatically opt everyone in, and then you'd have opportunity to opt out of it if you chose to do so.
Okay. I have no problem with it, again, you can get through some insurance companies something that'll cover from the shut-off to the house, but people don't do that, because they don't want to pay for it. This would be another thing as far as our education of what we would do, you know, because, you know, you get, you always get the city leave me alone, you know, don't tell me what to do, and then when we have the flood, why didn't you do something about it? And here's something we're doing, communicate it well, you can opt out, but here's a solution for something that's a potential big problem for a lot of people in town. So I have no problem with it, as long as they can opt out.
Right, absolutely. Well, and we want to give people that opportunity, it's just, you know, the heartbreaking part is when someone comes to City Hall and says, you know, I've got this issue, it's going to be $10,000 or $12,000, and.
Right.
There isn't really a lot I can do, because it's their line, it's in their property.
Right.
And I do think this is kind of insurance policy, like you said, for them to not have to worry about that.
Yeah, so I have no problem with it, as long as they can opt out.
Is there a number we're looking at for how many people opt? And we're going to have you opt in automatically, but if enough people opt out, does it not cost beneficial?
Well, I mean, that's something we'll have to take a look at. I mean, we expect, you know, I think when Jared and I sat down with them, we looked at electric and we looked at water, for the individual who is going to experience that failure, it's something like a 400-year, you know, cost, I mean, it would take 400 years of use to match up the cost of a $12,000 replacement of your line, with the $2 a month, $24 a year kind of a thing. So yeah, I mean, I don't expect that to happen, but it would depend on, you know, if we have 1,000 people opt out, we'll have to bring it back for evaluation.
I'm for starting it and offering it, and again, as long as people can opt out.
So what I can do is, I will get a write-up for this.
Okay.
And it'll be similar, the water side will be very similar to this one, with questions and answers, and then we'll have one for the electric as well, and then we'll just bring that to council for kind of a final yes or no vote.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. And that is all I had for my report tonight.
Okay. On the engineers' report.
All right, well.
Thanks, Brandon.
Tim mentioned the first one, bonding bill request, you can see that that request that we provided, Mrs. Nelson, Senator Nelson, is in your council packet, that is a 10% increase, which is about $1 million, so we're looking at about $10 million and asking for a 50-50 split for the bonding bill, so that should look pretty familiar. And then that is a draft bill that Tim referenced earlier, so that's more of an FYI, I guess, at this point, as was explained earlier. Second item, or any questions on that, maybe, before I jump forward? Second item, there's a resolution to accept right-of-entries, and again, this should look somewhat familiar, we did the same process for the Highway 57 project about, actually, I think it was December 9th of last year, so just over a year ago is when we ultimately approved all of those right-of-entries. These are ultimately for two properties, one being the future QuickTrip property, the LC Trucking property, and then actually, the county property for, to ultimately facilitate some grading onto their properties as we construct 16th Street, or specifically, the trail that it butts their property. So you can see the county's already signed theirs, and then Mr. Cunningham, we're working on to maybe get signed here tomorrow as part of some of the discussions we're having with him, so I'll ask you to consider passing the resolution to ultimately bring these in, and then it'll allow us to construct and grade on those properties, so.
Okay. Any questions for that? Basically, we have to do that. Do you have a motion to approve a resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for your work, appreciate it. Onto personnel, number one, hiring committee, recommendation to hire Mike Bolster for water, wastewater operator one, starting 1-3 of 23. I'll move to approve. Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
You're all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and that's basically an internal hire that applied for the position, so.
That's right, so we did have, we will have two openings now in the, you know, public work side of the department, so we are looking at trying to fill those, and we expect that recommendations for council on the 11th of January for those. At least one, we're hoping to have at least one good applicant, but hopefully, we'll have two. So one would be for Mr. Bolster, and then the other one would be for Mr. Langen, who was promoted within the department as well to the supervisor position, so.
Okay, thank you. And then number two, we have a recommendation to hire David Coons as full-time police officer starting in January. Chief, anything to add?
I know, we're still doing the background investigation, I had to wait for the BCA fingerprint to come back, and I want that to be cleared out, give us two weeks' notice, he currently works for Mayo, so.
Okay.
That's why we're just asking to get approval for the second meeting or the first meeting in January.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for the chief, or?
With him having prior experience in town, would that save some of the training and jumping in and?
It's still going to take the same amount of training.
Okay.
Any motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Took a while, but finally found somebody, so.
Actually, I had a question.
Yeah.
So when it came down to it, because I hadn't heard from you, Josh, did we end up having, how many applicants did we have, and how many did you end up interviewing?
Eight applicants, and we chose four to interview, and only two showed up for the interviews. Both of them are, one of them was a former reserve, David Coons, and then one's a current reserve. But it was two people that didn't want to be in this community.
Yeah. I felt like they were both good candidates, just as a private.
I know that it was pretty, you know, it was not a huge pool, and we found that with most of our applications, you know, we haven't had a huge pool of candidates, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything from your attorney?
No.